I'm going to call the City Council Caucus meeting to order for December 22, 2014. We have one public hearing tonight if the clerk would read that.
Public hearing number one regarding a local law allowing for best value purchasing.
Okay, and then we'll move into the regular agenda. The clerk would read item number one.
Item number one, for final consideration, a resolution approving the 2015 budget for the Upper Union Street bid.
Without objection on consent, item number two.
Item number two, a resolution authorizing, under original consideration, a resolution authorizing a letter of support for solar power.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent, item number three.
Item number three, a resolution authorizing the sale of 138 Hoff Avenue.
Discussed in claims, we'll have a number of properties on the agenda tonight, so without objection on consent.
Item number four, a resolution authorizing the sale of 650 Lansing Street.
Again, discussed in claims without objection on consent, item number five.
Item number five, a resolution authorizing the sale of 850 Albany Street.
Also discussed in claims without objection on consent, item number six.
Item number six, a resolution authorizing the sale of 1344, 1346, Fourth Avenue.
Without objection on consent, item number seven.
Item number seven, a resolution authorizing the sale of 1455 State Street.
Without objection on consent, item number eight.
Item number eight, a resolution authorizing the sale of 1722 Hamburg Street.
Without objection on consent, item number nine.
Item number nine, a resolution authorizing the sale of 6 Paulding Avenue.
Without objection on consent, item number 10.
Item number 10, under contract and supply, a resolution awarding a contract for cured in place sewer lining project.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent, and then we have a number of items that were discussed in our claims committee meeting this evening at 6:30, so we'll move right to item number 11, we're going to hold that for the next cycle, but item number 12.
Item number 12, a resolution authorizing the sale of 617 Orchard Street.
Without objection on consent, item number 13.
Item number 13, a resolution authorizing the sale of 1412 Albany Street.
Without objection on consent, item number 14.
Item number 14, a resolution authorizing the sale of 5 Winston Place.
Without objection on consent, item number 15.
Item number 15, a resolution authorizing the sale of 302 Division Street.
Without objection on consent, item number 16.
Item number 16, a resolution authorizing the sale of 367 12th Street.
Without objection on consent, item number 17.
Item number 17, a resolution authorizing the sale of 805 Lincoln Avenue.
Without objection on consent. There's nothing else to come before the City Council Caucus, I'll declare, entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, Mr. Riggi, seconded by Mr. Kozier, all in favor?
Aye.
I will now call to order the City Council meeting for Monday, December 22, 2014, ask you to rise through the invocation by the Reverend Dr. William Levering.
Let us pray. Almighty God of nervous police, Almighty God of angry people who are discriminated against, God of Christians and Jews and Muslims and people who wonder, God of expectant children and eager business people, God of homeowners and homeless, in this season of light soften our hearts, lift our spirits, and brighten our city, we pray. Amen.
Two weeks ago, Mr. Benham had asked us to have a moment of silence in memory of World War II veterans and military people, so after the pledge, I'll just ask you to stay, remain standing just for a moment. Mr. Benham, I'm going to ask you to lead us in the pledge.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as well.
Thank you very much. All right, if the clerk would call the roll.
Ms. Parrazo.
Present.
Ms. Porterfield.
Here.
Mr. Ferrari.
Here.
Mr. Kozier.
Here.
Mr. Riggi.
Here.
Mr. Mutiverin is excused, Ms. King.
Present. All right, we have no out-of-order resolutions, we do have one public hearing regarding a local law allowing for best value purchasing, I have two people signed up to speak to this, Jason Plank is the first.
Madam President, City Council Mayor, Madam President, I'll send my, by email, my remarks for tonight to the city, check Todd, city clerk. The best values itself is a circumventness of the affirmative action requirements and goals in bidding of goods and services. Best value does not mean technically best value. Let's give an example, one of them is, is that if this is passed by the City Council, the mayor's office and his staff can be able to bypass and piggyback on, let's say, New York City for the lowest bid. It doesn't always mean that it's going to be the lowest bid for goods and services. Why? Because New York City has higher taxes, higher living cost, and has higher shipping cost. Also too is that it doesn't, it also circumvences for local businesses to go out. If the local businesses are not on the bidding list for New York City, they'll never know that the bid went out. And it also goes for Albany, goes for Plowton or Buffalo, or anywhere else, or even at the federal level. Also too is this city does not have an economic disparity study to determine whether if they are meeting the goals of affirmative action, are they doing reverse discrimination, or are they doing underutilization. This board has no affirmative action plan put in place to guarantee that goods and services are being open and fair and open competitive bidding. Also too is in your resolution that you have in your own packet, it specifically states that it's supposed to take care of if the, to look at whether if it's inferior product or lower maintenance cost or higher maintenance cost. Well, what you're doing is you're saying that the mayor's staff is incompetent to do their job. The whole idea of putting an RFP out is putting it out to make sure that you've got the best product, that it's got the most reliable product, and that it's going to do the job that you're hired to. That whole sentence there completely, you know, discriminates towards the staff, saying that they're totally incompetent. Best value does not mean the best value for the thing. And with the current projects that the city has done over the last three, four years of taking federal money and not even utilizing best values at all, this City Council has told the staff, hey, we should have rehabbed that truck, it should have never gone out. You don't even have, the staff goes out and does the RFP and doesn't even consult with the City Council. And the City Council finds out a couple days, a couple months later, oh, wait a minute, we should have done this. Well, we already did the RFP, we're already behind, we need to go forward. That's not the way to do it. It bypasses the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Second person is Tanika Frost, is it Anusha?
Good evening, it's Amusa, Tanika Frost Amusa. Good evening, Madam President, Mayor, members of the City Council, thank you for this opportunity to address you this evening. I stand before you as the acting chair of the Schenectady Affirmative Action Advisory Board, and on 12/18, which was last Thursday, the board discussed this law, and what proposed law, and as you know, the board is charged with advising the mayor on all aspects of equal opportunity in city government, including in the areas of purchasing and contracting according to chapters 6-7 of the city code. Specifically, concerns were raised about the types of contracts covered under the law and the effect this law will have on New York State certified MWBE firms who are in a position to do business with the city. Specifically, current law applies to, the current law as proposed applies to service contracts covering janitorial and security contracts, this is something that is specifically mentioned in the proposed law, and this is a concern to the Affirmative Action Advisory Board for reasons that these are particularly services that MWBE firms could potentially benefit from in doing business with the city. Also, this, as it is in the general municipal law, our law, proposed law, covers a quantitative factor for offers that are small and certified MWBEs to be used in the evaluation of these best value contracts. Basically, what that means is that MWBE goals can be set on these contracts. The purpose of this law is to reduce purchase and administrative costs in procuring certain goods, equipment, and services by having the benefit of piggybacking off of federal and other government procurements. The Office of the State Comptroller's guidance on this law, section 103 of the general municipal law, limits the use of best value to the purchase of apparatus, materials, equipment, supplies, and contracts for services related to installation, maintenance, and repair of those items. The board agrees that the city should maximize cost savings in procuring goods and services, however, the board believes that this law should not have a negative impact on New York State certified MWBE firms. The board believes this law should be modified to limit potential negative impact on New York State certified MWBE firms, and will outline our concerns and provide recommendations in a letter to the mayor's office. The board hopes to work with city officials to limit best value purchasing to contracts related to the purchase of goods and equipment in accordance with OSC guidelines, outline factors that would be considered in evaluating best value that should be placed specifically in the law, set MWBE goals as outlined under General Municipal Law Section 103, and provide for review of best value purchases by a committee to include the EEO director or members of the Affirmative Action Advisory Board. So we look forward to working with you and working on this important law, and thank you for the opportunity to provide comments on behalf of the Affirmative Action Advisory Board. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up to speak, so I'm going to declare the public hearing closed. We'll move on to approval of the minutes from December 8. Mr. Kozier, seconded by Ms. Parrazo, all in favor?
Aye.
Communications and petitions.
Communications presented to the City Council for Monday, December 22, under the category of official, a letter dated December 22 from Paul Lefon, Director of Water and Wastewater, recommending the award of Cure-In-Place Sewer Lining Project contract to be awarded to Allstate Power Vac, Inc. Under general, there are none, under petitions, there are none.
Okay, thank you. Are there any committee reports? Ms. Parrazo.
Thank you. With regard to the Finance Committee, just a couple of announcements that will affect us as we move forward in the city. One is the Regional Economic Development Awards were just made, and Metroplex did receive $1.2 million for the Robinson Block revitalization, so it's great news, that would be three blocks on state between Erie and SCCC in downtown, adding apartments, restaurant, and retail space, so very exciting. We also recently had someone speak with regard to the Safety of Liberty Park, the burms, and some questionable activities that were going on in the park. The city has received $440,000 to renovate that space with more pedestrian-friendly green space and performance space and other nice attractions, so good news for people that are concerned about that park, it's very much on the city's radar, and now with the award from the state, we can move in a forward direction on that. I also want to say congratulations to Schenectady IDA, they recently renegotiated an inefficient pilot that has been in existence for quite a while, the pilot was designed under the previous administrator of the IDA, and it's with regard to a 400, or excuse me, 45,000 square foot building at 600 McCollum for Ellis Medicine. In the past, they were paying $29,000 a year for their pilot, it's now been raised to $53,000 in the first year, and then it'll increase annually to $76,000. So that revenue will not only benefit the city, but also the school district and the county, so, and now the IDA is administered by Metroplex under the county's Unified Economic Development Team, so all very, very good news. And I guess the last piece of news, of course, that is going to affect the Finance Committee moving forward is our opportunity to, you know, apply for a gaming license and have a casino in Schenectady, so I'm sure that there'll be much, much discussion to follow, and the Finance Committee will play a very active role in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? No? Okay, seeing none. I have no one signed up to speak on privilege of the floor related to the legislative agenda, so I will entertain a motion to approve the legislative agenda. Mr. Kozier, seconded by Mr. Ferrari, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move to privilege of the floor regarding city business. I have six people signed up, the first is Joe Rodriguez.
Good evening, I'd like to wish everyone a safe and happy holidays. I was here in November, spoke about my mother. We appeared in court today. We did comply, we got the letter of compliance, I was going to meet with Mr. Fellico, but I figured by just applying and do what I was told to do, we were threatened again. We have to have it done by March 4. Why, a 75-year-old lady that gets $1,000 a month pays the taxes, pays her mortgage, can't really afford to do it when the judge tells you to do it. His comment was, well, we have bigger situations that get it done. Who's talking about somebody else? I'm talking about my mother, who lost her husband last year because the ambulance couldn't get up Washington Street because of a snowstorm, number one. We're not filing no lawsuits. Number two, we're talking about a lady that's not healthy, had a stroke on October 3, and still decided to go through. People had to chip in that make minimum wage jobs, I'm disabled with State Street cancer, and my family that has no money, and try to chip in and needs to comply. Didn't want, he didn't want to hear it. I mean, this is sad. And this guy that cited us failed the test twice, and still employed by the city, who's not qualified, it's like me getting in my car and pulling somebody over and giving him a ticket, and I'm not certified. Why is this guy going around harassing us? He picked on two houses on that street, and that was my mother and the house next door, and there's a big violation right next door to my mother, and he pointed out the site to, he said to me personally, oh, look at that porch, but didn't cite him. And he's still employed by the city. How's that? The other thing I want to say is, Mr. Kozier, I saw him at Stewart's last week, and I saw where a gentleman was giving him a hard time, and what was funny about it, he was talking about the gaming and the casino company, maybe it's a negative thing, maybe it's a positive thing, but think about our children in the future, what was so ironic was, this man is sitting there filling out slips to pay Mega Millions.
Thank you. Anthony Carrata.
As I have said before about the city again, this casino, I look at it two ways, pros and cons, positive and negative. In this case, the negative comes outweigh the pros, the only pros I see are, one, jobs that the city needs, two, much money to help the city financially, that is the only two pros I see about this casino. The cons outweigh the pros are, one, it's just going to help people who have problems with gambling. Two, study after study have shown that people's lives, marriages, homes have been ruined. Three, the people have fallen through the cracks again seeking help with a problem with the game. Four, people like me who get help, assistance from the government, i.e. Social Security, Medicaid, stuff like that, when we get our checks that are supposed to help pay our rent and basic necessities, instead, they don't do that. Instead, some people spend the checks on the lottery in this casino, and won't have enough money to spend for the rest of their basic necessities at the end of the month. Now, in light of all this, I've said, the negatives outweigh the positives, their casino is not right, right now, for the city. As Mr. Riggi has said, numerous videos on YouTube and Facebook, what the city needs is to fix the infrastructure of the city. We've got places and buildings that have been abandoned two, three, four, or five years, one's been abandoned on Bardway, the business district, for five years. We've got people, respected people, businesses and homes that are again filled with graffiti, leaving the city, and the thing is that, he also said that this council had earmarked $3 to $4 million to help rebuild the casino. Wrong, wrong ideas, that isn't what this city needs right now. This city needs more positive ideas, and this casino is not one of them. The infrastructure of the city has fallen apart, and you want to revitalize downtown? You want to bring much needed jobs and money into the city? Try to start doing something by Mr. Riggi, because he has some good ideas, and people like me who are again fed up with the infrastructure of the city is being run and being ruined. And the thing is that we need, this City Council Festival needs to come up with better ideas to help revitalize the city. This city is in desperate need of help, and the only person that sees it, like myself, is Mr. Riggi, and this city needs desperate help, and this council approved of the idea of a casino? Bad idea!
Thank you. Jason Plank.
Madam President, City Council Mayor, about three, four weeks ago, you guys had passed a $2.5 million, 100% fully federal project. In there, you had, in the contract, had nothing there stating for minority business contracts, minority women's, had nothing on apprenticeship, and had nothing for Section 503 for persons with disabilities. Total blatant disregard. This is the same type of things that happened with the Erie Boulevard, which $13 million was put in place, and not one affirmative action goal was met out of that Erie Boulevard project, and even, even the Daily Gazette even reported on that piece. For one, the attorney is completely wrong in his assessment. Secretary Cafano, under President Carter in 1978, signed, in June of 1978, signed in Section 503, that's 36 years later. The new regs that just came out in March was just to qualify that there has to be a bare minimum 7% of persons with disabilities affirmative action into that piece. To say that he did not even be aware of it, I mean, you know, that's ridiculous, it's 36-year-old law that we have to have affirmative action on persons with disabilities. The state in New York passed affirmative action under the New York State Human Rights Law in 1974. So this law has been around for many, many years, and you completely ignored it. The other piece is, is that apprenticeship, yes, the city has a much stronger apprenticeship program than the state. The reason why is because this City Council said that it needs to meet more affirmative action and more minority goals. To say that because this is not a city funding, we don't have to comply with the affirmative apprenticeship program, the city has apprenticeship program, is totally bogus. Because you still have to comply with the New York State Apprenticeship Program, you still have to apply and make sure that these jobs are apprenticeship, so that way you can be able to grow. Because you're saying, hey, the person's not, we can't hire somebody who's not qualified. Well, the only way they can get qualified is by having an apprenticeship program, that's the whole sole purpose. So when you're taking a look at these things and putting these contracts out, over the next two months, January, February, most of these public works contracts are coming out. You need to make sure that the RFP not only comes before the City Council, but these three things are made sure they're put in there, so that we can have real jobs and jobs that are available for the city residents. We have to be able to hire our own people if we want to improve the quality of life within our own neighborhoods and our own community of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Joy Hall.
I'm Joy Hall of Schenectady. I would like to see, the city put lines down on Mallard Street for people to park, seem like some cars are taking up more space than they should be, in Hampton Hill Street too, and they need to fix up a lot of these streets. Hampton Hill, Land and Terrace, all around in that area, they need to do something, bump a de bump and holes everywhere up that way, curbs, sidewalks, and they need to put a walk light up on Mallard Street for everybody to cross the street, because it's getting worse and worse. People are speeding like crazy, they don't slow down for nothing, they're always in such a big hurry, they can't leave the house early, so they speed it to beat the lights, that's what they, that's what's happening all over in Schenectady. I hope you all have a nice holiday.
Thank you. Tom DiLorenzo.
Good evening, members of the city government, my name is Tom DiLorenzo, as some of you may know, I've been an attorney, and I'm going to tell you a story that I never heard of before in my 55 years as a lawyer practicing in Schenectady, New York. In the early part of October, Nameth Rizzoli, the gentleman sitting right there, called me and said, Tom, I'm going to buy some property from the city of Schenectady. I've been residing here, working in this business, it's 410 Union Street, running my delicatessen since 2010. My brother had a contract with the owner to purchase it, and we were making payments to the owner. Unknown to them, the owner never paid any taxes, and the year 2014, the city started foreclosing. Before I know it, the foreclosure was done, and that's when Mr. Rizzoli got ahold of me and said, can you help me purchase the property? Sure. So I contacted the City Council, City Corporation Council, I spoke with Rachel Ward, and she said, you have an offer? I said, yes, $30,000. She said, I'll take it up with the board and we'll get back to you. Called me a week or two later, she says, no, they'll take $50,000. So then I went to my client, I needed to speak to him, I said, they're willing to take $50,000, not $30,000. So he said, let me check, see what I can do money-wise. So we talked to his financial people, called me back a week or so later, he said, I can raise the 50, so I called Rachel Ward, I said, Rachel, we get $50,000? She said, okay, we got a deal. I said, you're going to draw the contract? And she said, well, let me see, I'm a little busy and I've done this before. And she said, well, let me see, I'm a little busy and I've done this before, but I got to check into, I haven't done this before, although I do a lot of real estate, but I want to check into it, how we're going to do it. I said, you want me to order title insurance now? She said, yes, let's get it going. Before you know it, we'll have a closing. Now, some of you might know title insurance is very expensive, and I ordered it from Legacy Title. As a matter of fact, Rachel Ward had a copy of it three, four weeks ago. She said, oh, I got the title insurance. He said, yes, looks like everything's going smooth now. The mayor's already approved it. He's approved the sale of fifty thousand of 410 to your client, just after formality going through the city council. So I called again, I said, anything else we can do about getting the contract? Because I like to have a contract in place so we can move forward, so there's no problem. We know what type of deed you're going to give us and the adjustments and so forth. And that the property has been off the payroll, off the tax roll, because the city owned it. There's certain regulations that we go through when you buy from the city. She said, I'm working on it, I'm working on that. I said, when is it going to go up for approval on the city council? Final approval, just for formality? She says, probably next week. This was a couple of weeks ago. Well, it wasn't on yet. I called her, she said, well, she says, we're going to put it on next time. She said, couldn't get it on, we'll put it on next time, which would be tonight. So this morning, I called. By the way, Mr. Rizzoli, kind gentleman he is, taxpayer for many years in the city of Schenectady, brings over a tray of cookies to Rachel Ward, thanking her for helping the deal go through. This was last Friday, am I right, Mr. Rizzoli?
Yes.
What did Mrs. Ward tell you about the deal?
All right, the connection drive, the history is going to come.
This is what she told him.
Mr. DiLorenzo, I'm going to need you to summarize, the three minutes is up.
This is a very important matter, ma'am, please. This man spent a lot of time there. We haven't even gone into what he spent in his place. So now I checked this morning with Rachel Ward, she doesn't call me back. I saw the city clerk, I spoke with him. He said, I don't see it on the agenda. I said, it's supposed to be. So I called Rachel Ward again, I don't get a phone call. Now Carl calls me. All the time, we got a problem. I said, what's the problem? He said, well, we got another offer. I said, you got another offer? You made a deal with us. Well, you know, the city has to prove it first. I said, well, the mayor approved it. We're doing title work, we got title insurance. She asked me to spend the money, get title insurance, do all that work. Now you're telling me you're going to sell it to someone else? Yeah, we got an offer of seventy-five thousand. If you want to match it, maybe we'll consider it. Is this the way we do business? Is this the way the city of Schenectady does business to taxpayers? It's a disgrace. Is that how you treat people? You make a deal and then you back down? This man spent, let me tell you what happened in 2010.
Mr. DiLorenzo, please, I need you to summarize.
In 2010, by the billing inspector, he was ordered to put a whole new wall in there, and he spent fifty-five hundred dollars. And this year alone, the city came up, the city billing inspector said, I want the front wall corrected, because it's no good, you got to correct it. Another three thousand dollars. He spent about, and then he put a roof on it for sixteen thousand. And Carl knows about equitable unjust enrichment, we'll get that out of our, Carl will, we have to, you know what I'm saying?
Mr. DiLorenzo, please, your time is well, well up.
Don't you have any consideration with taxpayers? You make a deal and you back down? Is that how you're going to treat these people? What are people going to think about this city? Think about it, ladies and gentlemen, just think about that for a while. You make a deal, a handshake, and you let people spend money.
Thank you.
You make a deal, and then you want to renege.
Thank you. Mary McLean.
Good evening, my name is Mary McLean. I live in the city. I said it before, and I will say it again, there is nothing wrong with the city of Schenectady. The problem lies in this chamber, on council's side of the railing, when members vote and pass legislation. The trades union contract is a perfect example. First, the contract specifically involved couples who work for the city. Members of council in such a position should have recused themselves from voting. As a taxpayer, I saw the matter as a conflict of interest. That was the intent of my comments at the last meeting. A trade union contract today, another union discipline tomorrow, because council has now opened the door to new giveaways. If a union member does not want to work for the city, he or she is free to find employment elsewhere. You don't hand them a four thousand dollar a year lifetime bonus to stay on the job. Council was wrong when it voted yes for the trades union contract, because it made an unnecessary new expenditure for the taxpayers, gave us members more pork, and it was a quid pro quo for endorsements. Special interest groups do not endorse candidates on good looks. Folks out there in TV land, a vote for Schenectady Democrats is a vote against yourself. I also want to respond to the comments made during miscellaneous business. A council member asked, what do you say to a child who is disturbed by an event? My answer, don't put yourself in that position if you are not academically qualified to handle it. That's what I learned in my psych class. As for dialogue between the police and community, the councilwoman was the agitator. After her appointment to council, she illegally crossed a crime scene. Her accomplice was arrested. The police let her go. She said they didn't recognize her. Now she wants dialogue. Lastly, she said ethnicity does not matter. It mattered to her when she was selecting members for the affirmative action committee. It mattered to her when she wanted an appointment to a city council. She, she thought she was entitled to it because her skin was a different color. One does not need a black skin to represent the black community. Only sincerity is necessary. When I lived in Virginia, I was a camp counselor for black children from the inner city. Some days, I was the only white person on the bus. If the councilwoman lives to be 100 years old, she will never achieve my experiences, and I have been the better person for it. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no one else signed up, so I'm going to declare this portion of the meeting closed. We will move to miscellaneous business of the council. Mr. Riggi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to announce the Bellevue Preservation Incorporated monthly meeting will be Thursday, January 8th, 7:00 PM at St. Paul's Episcopal Church, Fairview Avenue. The public is invited. Speaker to be announced. So maybe Mayor, if you don't have anything better to do, you could go there and announce what's going on. I'd just like to take this opportunity to wish everyone out there, and anybody, a Happy Hanukkah, which will be ending Wednesday, Happy Kwanzaa, which will be starting Friday, and a Merry Christmas to everyone out there. There's been some bad things that have been happening this past week, unthinkable things that have been happening, and I really fear for our, safety of our public safety officials. I don't even know what to say about some of these things and that other murder of that little boy. It's very tough to take, especially at this time of year, but I think we all have to sit back and count our blessings for the little things that we have, because there's some people that are really having a tough time, and this time of year is very tough to take things like this. But I think our public safety officials and officers, their lives are in danger, and I really hope they stay safe. That's the main thing, because it's a difficult job for them to do, and to be just asked sometimes to do things that no one else would like to do, and then to be put in danger for no specific reason. It's just unconscionable, and I can't get that out of my mind. But I wish everyone the best of everything for, in this upcoming year. Hopefully, things will get better, and I hope that we can all come together and see that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Prazzo.
Thank you. Couple of things, there was a letter to the editor about a city worker who helped a woman who fell in her sidewalk, and she was thanking that city worker, and, you know, I think it's a great opportunity for us to recognize that with our budget constraints, we're always doing more with less. And in that recognition, we have a tremendous crew of people who care very, very much about this city and its residents. So I personally want to thank our city crew for all that they do, and I was especially pleased to be prompted to remember to do that from a public recognition from one of our citizens. Also, congratulations to the mayor. The knock-down, drag-out continues, and this one is a good one, right? We lost property on Cutler Street and also Albany Street today as part of our ongoing demolition to remove the blight from our neighborhoods, so that certainly deserves some recognition. Just with regard to the casino announcement, I know, again, I'll bring it up, but I think that ongoing conversations are really important. I've had a tremendous amount of feedback from the announcement, some concern, but also some celebration. And I was asked specifically by one of my phone calls to announce to all of the city residents that Marie De Novio is in full support of the casino, and she'd like to publicly let everyone know that. So I'll attend to that piece of business. And then I would say that Mr. Riggi took some of the words right out of my mouth. I want to wish everybody happy holidays, but I also want to recognize how hard this time of year is for people, for our public safety officials that are at risk, seemingly more so than they have been in the past. To Markeia Harris's family, whose life was taken away from not only her, but her children in a very untimely and awful way. To five-year-old Kenneth White of Burn, and his family and loved ones. And to Lemon Zia, who was recently hit by a car on Albany Street. You know, these are things that hit very close to home and are very, very painful all year round, but especially this time of year. So although I send good wishes to everyone, I also ask that we all take a pause in how lucky we are to have the ones we love around us. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Porterfield.
Thank you. And two weeks ago, in this chamber, I did talk about relationships between police and communities of color. And we've heard, as Mr. Riggi has said, some really negative things that have been happening to our law enforcement. And violence, as we all know, is not the answer. And Gandhi has said that an eye for an eye makes the whole world blind. So, you know, my condolences to the families of those officers, as well as to their colleagues in blue, because that's not the answer. And I will reiterate again that, you know, conversation and talk and understanding is what makes the difference, and we should come together and to do that. But then, I mean, just also mention that I heard a little news snippet that Assemblyman Tedesco was talking about getting a bill passed regarding getting bulletproof glass for police cars. And I think that if that bill does come to the floor and comes to fruition, that's something that I would, I would like to be, to see this council be able to support, because when it comes to protecting our law enforcement, it doesn't, partisan politics should be put aside, and we should, we should do what's best for all. So I just, and I also want to just clarify something that the speaker said, and that I wasn't arrested and then let go. That did not happen, so let me just put that out there and clarify that. And also, as Ms. Prazzo said, we're in some very difficult times right now in terms of the tragedies that have happened in our community, and again, and also around the world. So, you know, we talk about this time of year, we're a peace on earth, and right now, it just, unfortunately, it's just not a very peaceful time. So I just ask that, you know, we always start this council meeting with prayer, that we, for those who believe in prayer and the power of prayer, that we really remember people in prayer who are going through the very, very difficult times that, that they are right now. And that we work together to try to do as much as we can, as a council, as a human being, to better life for those that, who we touch daily. Maybe we don't even realize that we touch people's lives, but we touch people's lives daily, so that we can do what we can to make it better. So I wish everyone a Merry Christmas and happy holidays if you don't celebrate Christmas, and a very prosperous New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Ferrari.
Thank you. I'd like to take this opportunity to wish everyone a Happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, and Happy Holidays for those who don't celebrate either. And, you know, hopefully this year coming, that we can come together and work as not only a community, but as a city as a whole, and work with one another. Lastly, I'd like to thank the mayor for keeping his promise on behalf of my family and the Mount Pleasant neighborhood for demolishing 1150 Cutler Street today. That has been an eyesore for so long, and for small businesses such as my family, it's just making that neighborhood a little bit better, so we thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kozier.
Thank you. And again, just echo the sentiments and feelings of everybody here. Merry Christmas and certainly Happy Holidays to everybody, and a very prosperous, I know it'll be a very prosperous New Year with the recent awarding of the, from the New York State Gaming Commission. It was a very exciting afternoon for many, many of us. And of course, the very next day, we got to see Santa Cuomo come here to Proctors, as he called himself, as he was introduced. But again, to thank everybody who was involved, you know, certainly, you know, the city council, the mayor, Dave Buechel, the Gillespie Group, Rush Gaming, Reginald Metroplex, it goes on and on and on, but certainly just a wonderful opportunity that we have here before us. And whether we are for it or against it, it certainly is, we have to take time now to work together. It's going to be a project that's going to benefit this community, I think, greatly, and not only the benefit of the community, but to the benefit of our school district as well. Again, we're talking about some two-point-to-whatever million dollars per year to the Schenectady School District, and I think it's very, very important, in lieu of them just recently laying off over 100 pair of professionals, 75 teachers, increasing class sizes, I think it's something that's very, very important to the entire city of Schenectady. And in fact, ma, I just want to thank William Reavis and the Schenectady Municipal Housing Authority. I had an opportunity to stop over there today. They were doing a fundraiser for the Harris family at the Steyman's Family Investment Center. And I arrived there early, I got there about four o'clock, it started at three, and believe it or not, the investment center was just filled. It was filled with laughter and of joyous kids running around, and of prayer and of sadness at the same time, to have a young lady, again, as we've all spoken, taken away from us too early. And as many of us have said, and even the mayor de Blasio, go home and hug your children every single day. You just don't know what's going to happen. But again, thanks to Bill for putting that together. I know Prince, you had something to do with it as well, you're our cameraman over there. Just a great way that the community had come together today for the entire family. And finally, just one quick thanks to Toys for Tots. Just a couple of weeks ago, actually, Councilwoman Marion Porterfield was there, and the Schenectady Fire Engine Two was at a breakfast sponsored by the Women's Lady Auxiliary of the Ancient Hibernians at the JFK Division on State Street. As Marion can attest to, we served, we had over, well, close to 200 youth that came to breakfast. That was an all-you-can-eat breakfast, again, sponsored by the Youth Bureau and by Toys for Tots and Hibernian Women. But it was just a great day, a great event, and I certainly want to thank Toys for Tots for what they do for this entire community throughout the capital district. I can't say enough about how they changed the lives of many of our kids. And for the last three, four days, I've been delivering toys to many of the families that continue to call the Youth Bureau. And we're at a point now where we're just lost, but I just went on Division Street today and there's a family of five children. And it was just a blessing to see the hugs and kisses that we received. So again, thank you to everybody. Again, thanks to all the local organizations, our schools, the churches, and of course, our nonprofits, and to the Senate, you know, our regular citizens who have been supporting our youth in the past. And again, a very Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and we'll see you next year.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to quickly touch on Mr. DiLorenzo's comments, surprised that an attorney's been practicing that long, doesn't understand that disposition of public property, the final decision rests with the legislative body. So any implied agreement, even others, try and work with as many people as we can, the final decision on the sale of property does rest, with the city's case, with the city council. And at the same time, it's exciting, we're, yes, we have some of these situations where there may be a little bit of conflict, but there's an interest in property that some of us, including myself, a few years ago, wouldn't have thought would even be here. So we're seeing counteroffers come in, we're seeing people who are being more creative in terms of what they're going to do with the property, and structuring these deals, hopefully to bring long-term value to the neighborhoods. As Councilman, Councilmember Prazzo pointed out, recently, we'd been awarded some of the money from the CFA process for the Robinson Building, work in Liberty Park. Just before that, there was some transportation dollars that were awarded to Schenectady, a little over three million dollars to redo some of the traffic patterns in roads outside of GE on Erie Boulevard and coming off Washington Avenue to reduce the incidence of accidents there. There's another million dollars that was going to be shared by Schenectady Colony and Albany to do pedestrian safety improvements along the Route 5 corridor. And part of it, the city engineers also got the... And part of it, the city engineers also got the regional people to put special emphasis on the intersection of State Street and Brandywine, and also the traffic from Albany Street. We've all dealt with some of those issues, and so there's a lot of good things happening. We, again, were fortunate to get the designation for one of the casino licenses in New York State. It shows really that Schenectady's functioning at a different level. Those where they were regional casinos, they were world-class players that were in the market. And so Schenectady and the team was competing against people from across the country, and even people with international ties. And when you sorted out the value, the structure, and the financing of each one of the deals, Schenectady prevailed in this region, and it should be a pat on the back, not only for the Gillesse Group, Rush Gaming, Metroplex, but a lot of broad-based community support that went into that application. And I understand that the casino also brings some level of apprehension. It's a three-hundred-million-dollar deal. We know when we do packages here in Schenectady that are much smaller, we'll get debate. This is going to have a significant impact in terms of testing our ability to actually get a deal in place, get the permitting there, get the construction done. It will tell you that the city staff, the team we have in place is ready to rise to that challenge. It's going to provide job opportunities, our training ability through the community college, that people within this community will benefit over the long term. And we're also in a better position to minimize any of those potential negatives from the casino, in that sometimes, I'll tell you, that people tend to look at the negative side and don't look at the positive, or they've only talked about negative influence. Talked about, we knocked down two more houses today, the one on Cutler, the one on Albany Street. It's two of, group of six that went out with that first round of bidding. Those are the worst of the worst. And again, it's taken a while to line up that money from the 108 loan and from the land bank, but we're now just working through that, trying to deal with the worst of the worst property, and sending a message out to the community that we are serious about getting rid of the blight in the extremely distressed properties. And as we're seeing from the housing sales, at the same time, we want to continue to market the community and show people that there is opportunity here, and that there is value within the neighborhoods. And with that, it's already been said, but wish everyone, whether you celebrate Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, or Christmas, that you enjoy your upcoming or current holidays, that enjoy your family and friends, and we all look forward to a great two thousand and fifteen. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just echo a lot of your comments, like this has been an exciting couple of weeks for the city of Schenectady. And, you know, with Lower State Street, the casino, the demolition, there's just some good things happening, and we should be proud of that. And then I would also echo, wanting to wishing everybody Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, and Happy Holiday. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, Mr. Kozier, seconded by Mr. Ferrari. You all in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.